Welcome, we're going to the city council meeting this evening. I'd ask if you could stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance and immediately following, stay standing for the invocation which will be shared by Councilman Thompson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please pray with me. Father, we come before you and we thank you that we have this freedom to be able to discuss the issues, decide what we do, how to take care of this city that we live in. We thank you for this freedom and this opportunity. We thank you for those that are here tonight, the servants, the public servants, the citizens, the council people. We pray that you just give us guidance as we go through tonight because there'll be many decisions made and things that affect the people, and pray that you just guide us, direct us, bless us now in Christ's name. Amen.
All right. One of my pleasures is the opportunity to bring proclamations. I'm honored to have the first proclamation this season for National Law Enforcement Memorial Week. I'd like to have representatives from our police department come forward.
Finest?
Brightest?
Hello there.
Hello?
Hello, Billy. I'm really good, actually. You guys are all up to good. I don't recognize you.
You guys need to shave.
The proclamation reads, "Law enforcement Memorial Day, May 14 through 2017. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Bonner Springs Police Department. And whereas there are 51,548 assaults against law enforcement officers in 2015 resulting in approximately 14,453 injuries. And whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including two members of the Bonner Springs Police Department. And whereas a total of 1,439 law enforcement officers died in the line of duty during the past 10 years, which is an average of one death every 61 hours or 144 per year. And whereas Bonner Springs Law Enforcement Memorial Day is May 17, 2017, in commemoration of those courageous officers who sacrificed their lives in the line of duty. And whereas these special observances provide all Americans with the opportunity to appreciate those heroic men and women in law enforcement who dedicated their lives to preserve public safety. Now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do proclaim May 14 through 20, 2017 as National Law Enforcement Memorial Week and encourage all citizens to remember those individuals who gave their lives for our safety and express appreciation to those who continue to dedicate themselves to make Bonner Springs a safer place in which to live." Congratulations. Camera takes a long time. Do you have any speech that you want to give?
No, just appreciate everybody's support. We're trying hard. We're going to keep addressing Ford and the Department of Defense Department and the staff. They are working really hard and trying to take on some new tasks. You'll probably see us a lot more active in the coming weeks. We're trying to get after it.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. You too. Thank you. And also, I'm honored to have a proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week. We look so much alike. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Sir. Yeah, again, well, security. Proclamation reads, "Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, firefighters, educators, administrators, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and others. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of continuing education and specialized planning to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishment of these emergency medical service providers, now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21 through 27, 2017, as Emergency Medical Services Week with the theme EMS Strong, Always in Service. And I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities." Congratulations. Thank you, sir. I'm really glad you guys are here. Hope you never...
I never helped you personally.
If you do, just give us a call. All right. Thank you. Now, one of the things that are nearest and dearest to my part is clean water, clean drinking water, and a proclamation for drinking water week. It reminds us all of our...
All right, the legends are here. A group of legends.
Take these out.
Picture. This proclamation reads, "Whereas water is our most valuable natural resource for refreshment, hydration, and quality of life, and whereas tap water delivered to our homes and businesses as safe, clean drinking water by our dedicated city staff members provides us with public health protection, fire protection, and the main ingredient for our nourishment. And whereas Drinking Water Week reminds us that 10% of the world population, over 600 billion people, do not have access to safe, clean water. And whereas any measure of a successful society, low mortality rates, economic growth, and a healthy population is dependent on a clean, safe, reliable water source. And whereas we are all stewards of our water infrastructure and understand the need for investment, maintenance, and improvements of the water system for future generations. And whereas our water is a precious resource, and I call on all citizens of Bonner Springs to practice water conservation and help protect our water sources from pollution. Now therefore I, Jeff Harrington, Mayor, do hereby proclaim May 7 through 13, 2017, as Drinking Water Week in the City of Bonner Springs, and ask that residents join in the recognition of the Bonner Springs Water Services Staff of the Public Works Department for their expertise, dedication, and commitment to providing safe, clean drinking water to the residents and businesses of Bonner Springs." Congratulations. Thank you very much.
I'll do a few introductions here real quick because these three guys are the ones that really keep this water moving here in Bonner. Clark Warrow is responsible for all the distribution system. He's watching this tank restoration project we're doing. Low K is working with contractors, works with Vin's feet fitting, is our maintenance foreman, fixes all the stuff when it breaks.
Your board of...
We got a leak up on Walworth.
Yes.
And then Robert Bryant's the chief plant operator. He oversees all the wells and the plant production and keeps putting out clean water.
Bob Bryant, you guys are good.
Thank you, guys.
I appreciate the samples that you brought. We need to bottle our own water. It's an acquired taste.
That dumpster sat there for a week or two where that leak is. Remember they had that big yellow dumpster sitting there? Yeah, right there. And that's leaking.
See you, guys.
Get all my goodies here. All right. Right on to item number four, which are citizens' concerns about items not on today's agenda. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the mayor and city council on the record in the open public meeting. No immediate action will be taken on these issues in the interest of fair and transparent city government. All issues will be investigated, researched, or addressed as necessary and with the consensus of the city council placed on a future agenda. Is there anyone that would like to stand, step to the podium, and address the city council regarding items not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll roll right along to item number five, six, seven, and eight, the consent agenda, which includes minutes of the April 24, 2017 city council meeting, claims for city operation, public housing authority claims, and the mowing bid. Staff, is there anything to be pulled? Anyone from the audience like to pull any items? Council questions to entertain a motion?
Mayor Harrington, I'd like to make a motion, second. The consent agenda as presented.
Second. Moved and seconded. Vote, please.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Very good. On to item number nine, KG Properties LLC IRB public hearing. We'll go ahead and ask if there's a staff presentation, and we'll have that, and then we'll work our way on through.
Mayor and council, good evening. Tyler Ellsworth with the Law from P. T. Rock, City's Bond Council. Items nine and 10 on the agenda this evening relate to a public hearing and resolution of intent for an industrial revenue bond that requested 10-year tax abatement for affiliates of Kincaid Group, Midwest Bus Cylinders, and Kincaid Coach Lines have proposed to consolidate their operations in an area in the industrial park south of the river just by K-7. And I have been in contact with staff and their representatives from K-8 here along with the... And actually, it turns out, on the staff side of things, we've been working towards this evening's hearing in consideration of a resolution of intent based on the understanding that the company was requesting 50% property tax abatement, which is consistent with your IRB policy. Since the agenda deadline for the meeting this evening, as of Wednesday, Thursday of last week, it became clear in discussions with the company and their representatives that they had a different understanding of the level of agreement that they were requesting. Their understanding was that they were requesting an abatement in excess of 50% based on various factors, and I'm sure that their council will have an opportunity to discuss those briefly this evening. But essentially, this evening, if council is willing to entertain continuing the hearing to a subsequent council meeting, that would give staff and the company an opportunity to sort of look at what the level of agreement is that's being requested and to see if, given the nature of the project, that it's something that the city would entertain increasing the level of agreement above your policy.
Very good. All right. Okay. We'll need to go ahead and open the public hearing then and ask for comments and see if there's any interest in continuing it.
That's right.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open the public hearing then at 7:44 and ask if there's any that you'd like to add. Any...
Do we need a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes.
Oh, then I'd entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
Mayor Harrington, I'd like to make a motion to hold a public hearing to consider Kansas sales tax and add valor and tax exemption for property finance with the proceeds of Is that correct? Did I get that number right? Of industrial revenue bonds.
Moved.
Close enough. Second.
Seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. Now it's open.
Great, thank you. My name is John Snyder. I'm with the Law from Detton's LLP, and I'm representing KG Properties and the affiliate companies of Kincaid. We really appreciate the time here today and apologize for the misunderstanding and request for continuance. We've had a good dialogue with city staff and bond council, and it wasn't until Wednesday, Thursday, when the pilot schedule came out and the cost-benefit analysis from the State of Kansas came out, that we realized that our kind of understanding expectation was that one number and the city was working off of the policy and certainly understand that. And so rather than have a public dialogue about this, what we thought would make most sense is to sit down with city staff, with bond council, with pro forma and some other additional information that maybe didn't make it into the application, and talk through the whole project once again with city staff to see if there's some type of understanding that we can then bring back to city council at a later date that kind of supports why we're asking for a tax abatement above the general city policy. So from my experience, it's best to do that with city staff, sitting down, rather than debating it publicly. That way, hopefully, we're all on the same page and compare, and if not, at least we've had enough of the dialogue in advance of... So that's why the request, and like I said, I apologize that we didn't have this fleshed out a little bit sooner than tonight's hearing.
And the opportunity for the public consideration will be if we do choose to continue it at that point.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. And I think you've got a supplemental letter that kind of explains a little bit of it, but I think we'll be able to flush it out quite a bit. I would like to get it with city staff. Everyone's been great to work with. We really appreciate it so far. And as you know, the Kincaid Group and what they've had here in Bonner Springs and their commitment to the community. So I think this will be a very good project for the city to consider, so we look forward to having a real public dialogue about this once we go through the numbers once again.
Very good. All right, I would entertain a motion then to continue this to... Do we have time on the next agenda?
Tyler, if you agree. Yeah, that's fine, and if things aren't...
That's two weeks.
And time, depending on how quickly we can sit down and hear something now and the state can turn around and cross benefit analysis, maybe we can do that. But I'd say for now, continue it until 27.
Okay. I would entertain that motion.
Is that item 10?
This, it would, we would not have to discuss item 10 then. We would skip item 10 until after the continues of this public hearing. Make a motion. I need a motion to continue.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to continue the public hearing considering a sales tax and add valor and tax exemption to property finance, the proceeds of approximately $13,932,000 of industrial revenue bonds to the May 22 council meeting.
Seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? And it's continued.
Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Best of luck.
Yeah, I do.
Go ahead and also, I'll entertain a motion to table item 10, the IRB resolution.
I make a motion that we table item number 10, make a motion to approve a resolution of intent to issue industrial revenue bonds.
Seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? No, I was just rolling through it. It was unanimous. Now, we're up to item number 11. Item 11 is considering rezoning of BSZ 137 Lake Forest Edition. Staff?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Don Sloane, City Planner. Before you tonight, it is unanimous recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve a change in zoning for 3.72 acres from A1 agriculture to R1 single-family. This actually had two public hearings by the Planning Commission, March 21, which continued. During that public hearing, we determined through many ways that there are actually four owners, so we have only one owner is the applicant. Those have subsequently been corrected, went back to the Planning Commission on the 18th of April, and unanimous recommendation to approve, subject to the three listed conditions. Scott Confer is here, the applicant for Lake of the Forest. I will answer your questions.
Very good. Anything to add?
I'm Scott Confer, the land surveyor representing Lake of the Forest ownership group, and I'm out of the shape of finding one night's office. We agree to the stipulations that the planning has suggested, and we're ready to move forward with this.
Very good. Thank you very much. Seeing nothing else, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve ordinance to rezonate 3.72 acres from A1 agriculture to R1 single-family residential, subject to conditions listed in the staff report.
So moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comment in the council? We'll start down here. Sir?
They bought the land from the Boykac King?
Yes.
So these people that lived at Lake of the Forest, they were zoned agricultural? All these, this crocker and this hole and line?
No.
Just that little 56 feet.
Just some of their property was owned that weird.
Yeah. I will belabor you with the whole story.
Yes, well, it just...
This cleans it up.
Yeah, okay, I see what you're doing. That's all I have.
Seeing no other questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Shannon?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Yes. That's why I did... Onto item number 12, which is the agenda I'm considering, considering the final plat of PT-17-101 Lake Forest Mesa Lot. Staff?
Mayor, again, Don Sloane, City Planner, this is an interesting one. It's a final plat, but there's no dedications. It's a formality before you because we don't have a provision for anything else of the required signatures of the bio... The date conditions for the plat, the Planning Commission recommended approval of those. Those conditions have been addressed. Yes, Scott Confer, shaping quite awards here if you have any questions.
Thank you. Anything else, staff? Can you do that from there? You're good. Anybody else? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt the final plat of Lake of the Forest Mesa Lot.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? Vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Early? Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Yes. Congratulations. I'm sure it'll be better to have this all cleaned up, so...
Straight out there.
Yep, get it all straight, all the ducks in a row, literally. Onto item number 13, a resolution for complete streets policy. Staff?
Mayor, again, Don Sloane, City Planner, this item has been bouncing around for quite a while. It started, actually, it started last year during the planning process, the public meeting we had. One of my tasks this year for the city manager was to work on a complete streets policy. I've worked with the Planning Commission several months on this. We looked at diversions from Mark, we looked at diversions from Thea Lawrence. We ultimately, after the communication with the State of Kansas, could find out what they did, said we borrowed their policy and we amended it. That policy is before you tonight. I added the pictures to it. I like pictures that you should picture that. But what you have before you tonight is being recommended unanimously for approval. And again, the big piece to this is this does not mandate anything, but recommends that we look at streets, both new and revised street system, to consider the points that are needed for complete streets. So I think it's a benefit to everybody to do this. May I answer your questions?
Thank you. Anyone from the public would like to make comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adopt a complete streets policy resolution.
Questions, concerns, comments, starting down here.
I like the pictures. Show sidewalks on both sides, and that would be the...
That's the goal.
Yes, well, that's a good goal.
Teaching them, Mr. Sloane?
Yes.
What is it, transit bolt out?
It's, it is a, in an intersection where it gives you protection at that intersection, it bolts out so that the parking goes around it. It's to minimize that distance you got to cross.
Thank you.
There's several terms within that. The whole thing is to look at all modes of transportation. The pedestrians are the most perilous of all to do that, and so there's different methods to do that. There's islands that they'll put, see, cross the first two lanes, stand on the island until they're changing lanes.
Let me cut you off, Georgia.
No, no, I'm tickled.
Thank you.
Sure.
I have a quick question. So if this were to pass, any future developments, Lee Valley Four, something like that, they would go by these illustrations and these recommendations? Would that be part of their plan for the streets into the new subdivision?
The, you bring up Lee Valley Four.
Just as an example.
Just as, it's a good one to bring up. We would probably try to continue what's in Lee Valley Four through the rest of the phases of Lee Valley Four. We wouldn't want to transition, let's say, Connect Street West...
Understood.
To be looking different than the rest of it is in the subdivision.
Fair enough.
It's one of those. But if we look at a new subdivision or a street reconstruction, Morris, for example, that this would be a good time to take a look and see what we have. And again, a lot of times, it's a right-of-way issue. And much like Kump, we had the right-of-way, but if you look at currently how it is, that is a complete street.
Right.
Kump, absolutely isn't. But we would not force that. We would make those recommendations, for sure.
Thank you.
I'd like to come back if I could, Mr. Sloane made a comment that I'd like to ask about.
Please.
We would try, is what you said in the new future project. Well, we're getting ready, I hope, to do some streets, Cornell, Emerson, with water lines and sidewalks that supposedly come in curves. Will this be what we're going to do there? This bottom one with the sidewalks on both sides and...
The policy is to look at it in regards to those. It's not mandating that you do those pictures. It says that you'll take a look at the street and lose Cornell. Is there sufficient right-of-way existing in Cornell to meet the mandates of the street system and the mandates of those other factors? In some cases, it may not.
Leaving a sidewalk in one side because there's no...
Right, and that's the considerations that they're saying. We're not mandated to have to have two where there's only space for one, and we're not mandated to have bulbs out, bulb outs where we have a crossing pedestrian crosswalk that is well-designed. So these, it doesn't have to be everything on every road, but it's encouraging the complete streets perspective on all of our future development. And just like with Lee Valley, having a sidewalk on one side is certainly a part of it, but it might, there might be some suggestions that the new phases would like concerning the crosswalks and how they are at the corners or at the very corner or back from the corner. So there's, you know, lining up, those kind of things. This is all an integrated plan.
Okay, I'm just saying that the old parts where there are no sidewalks, where they could be used, this doesn't mean we're going to put them in. This is what we would like. I mean, so what good is this? If we don't have to put them in where we need them, when we do some street work...
Well, if the way allows for it.
I mean, that means we don't have to do it.
Hold on, keep in mind, it says future city streets, meaning in order for re, you know, redoing the street, restructuring, you know...
And we're going to put...
Not necessarily putting new...
Supposed to put in new water lines in, so we're supposed to...
Yeah, but that's not a reconstruction of a street.
Yeah, but that's not a reconstruction of a street.
Well, like the...
Go ahead, Sean.
I was just going to say, to answer your question, maybe directly, the idea is to develop a policy, put in a policy that we're no longer looking at a street corridor simply as a mechanism to get a car made a point. It's going to include all sorts of considerations, pedestrian, bicycle, and otherwise. There may be instances where we say this would be even better off the one way, the right way. It may be considering roundabouts. It may be considering all sorts of things that aren't necessarily... I said not. But the point is that we're not putting ourselves in a hole here to say we're going to do it. We're telling people, we're letting the public know, we're letting grant agencies know that this is one of our first boxes that we've got to check in terms of any sort of...
Grant agencies like Mark or somebody. Okay, I'm not trying to be a nay-bob of negativity here. I just would like to figure that this gets worse.
Look how nice a product or a tentative plan we have for 138th from K-32 to Morris. And those take into consideration these type of goals. And although it doesn't, we're not required to, it's just, we're saying these are the considerations that we're going to make.
Well, as Mr. Sloan alluded, Kump is a complete street, and that looks good out there, so.
Well, we're balancing what developer will typically want to do, which is to maximize at least the potential for limited cost with the need to provide public mechanisms and transportation other than the vehicles sometimes. And that's, that's a difficult...
All right. That's all I have. I just, you know, because the old parts, there's none. And I know the new would be cool, but, you know...
The point, just to finish, that little discussion is in fact that our subdivision regulations require a sidewalk on one side of the street. If we redevelop the street, you're going to put a sidewalk in one side of the street. It's which side we put that on, because there's going to be right-of-way even within the old 60-foot part of the old park town.
And I've looked on...
And that's what this, this will do.
Some of my old streets over here, and you wonder which side who's going to be mad, you know? That's all I have.
No, they're holding.
I give them your name.
Yeah. Well, yeah, it's going to be both ways.
Any others?
That's all I had.
Seeing none? Vote please.
Early?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Thompson? Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Yes. Did I say nay-bob of negativity? I bet I shot somebody else. Onto item number 14, which concerns the vacation EV 105 for 141st Street and the replat lot number one of Bercle subdivision. Staff?
Again, Don Sloan, City Planner. This, the right-of-way was dedicated by Platt back in 2004 when the Bercle plat was redone. The, this is coming to you tonight from Kate Peppercorn Mansker from Peppercorn Mansker, Peppercorn Engineering. Too many, it's very hard. I got to fill it in.
Easy for you to say.
60-foot of right-of-way. What's taken so long is the Wilkerson Crane Rental Company purchased the ground to the west of the right-of-way. The church, Calvary Baptist Church owns the right-of-way to the east side. They split it. There was an agreement made such that the church was relinquished their 30 feet, thereby granting the entire 60-foot, when it's vacated, it's vacated, to Wilkerson Crane. That agreement's in your packet tonight, that those negotiations occurred, that's what took it so long to do that. Both Public Works and myself recommended we vacate this. They never completed, they never built the street, so we left it up to Wilkerson Crane Jet Home. Do you ever want to develop? No, so let's vacate. So before you tonight, we brought this to vacate.
We're good. Thank you. Anything to add?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. Kate Peppercorn Mansker with Peppercorn Engineering and Environmental. And I'm the applicant on behalf of the adjacent landowners, Wilkerson Crane Rental and Calvary Bible Church Association. And as Don alluded to, we're seeking approval on the vacation of 141st Street. And in that agreement, Wilkerson Crane Rental has agreed to absorb the cost to construct the entrance, which will serve both properties. And they have a maintenance consensus on how to maintain that access. So yes, seeking your approval, and I'm happy to field any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve an ordinance to vacate the right-of-way and retain as a utility easement, subject to the conditions listed in the staff report.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments? And we'll start down here.
I noticed the agreement seemed like it was very amicable to both parties. Does the easement, does it go with the property or with Calvary Bible? Or is this with the property? So if they sell the property, it'll...
Right. Agreement transfer.
Sir?
Nothing.
No. No other questions, concerns? Vote please.
Thompson?
Yes.
Stevens?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Yep?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Yes. Onto item number 15. Comprehensive plan change for BSCP-29 Compass Center Project. And staff?
Again, Don Sloan, City Planner. Compass Center Project is a 156.68 acres of land that lies southwest toward 110th and Riverview Avenue. The recommendation coming to you tonight is to approve on a six-to-one vote. The change for the future land use is from a vacant agricultural to an industrial designation as a follow-on to the next item. The, in your packet tonight is the minutes several individuals spoke at the meeting, including Corv Maxwell, who's here tonight to address you if you have any questions. The also in your packet behind the public hearing notice is what was presented to the planning commission during the public hearing. It is listed as the Compass Center Project, Lane Four Group. Staff did not receive this ahead of time, however, it's now part of the official record of the project. There's been a couple of different names to this project. One of them is cracked up, the sign said "Here" during the public meeting, which the residents of Edwardsville were a little bit embarrassed, the fact that they took our yellow sign and did that to it. But the, the project is speculative right now. We don't have a user, but if you look at the exhibit, it shows about 2.4 million square foot building. One of the issues with this one was initial discussion, whether you have industrial or light industrial. The real difference between those, other than specific uses, is things are done within a, within a building. And when they're done within a building, they become way less objectionable to the name. So that's, and the planning commission took the consideration, and that six-to-one recommendation comes to you tonight. I'm glad to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. Gentlemen, anything to add?
Mayor Corv Maxwell, personally for appearing today. On behalf of Compass, I also have with me Hunter Harris, head of development at Lane Four and a partner at that organization that is spearheading this project. We put all of our comments on the public record of the planning commission, but of course, would stand for any questions that any members of the council or the mayor would have. We're incredibly excited about this project. We think it is a kickoff to development on the 110th Street, south of I-70. This is going to start bringing development south of I-70. That's something we have been working for, for a very, very long time. I know the community of Edwardsville has been, as well as Bonner Springs. So we're excited about this project. Look forward to moving up forward and look forward to working with the Bonner Springs on this to bring high-quality users and jobs into the community. That, we'd obviously stand for any questions on this application or others, and would be happy if there's any questions from the public to answer those as well.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve the change to the future land use map of comprehensive plan for 156.68 acres, from vacant agricultural to industrial light land use designation.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Questions, concerns, comments from the commission?
I do have one question. So looking at this map, if this were to eventually become what I'm understanding is, are two very large warehouses? Is that, is that what I'm looking at right here?
So that, what we've called it is basically a conceptual massing model.
Okay.
So Mr. Sloan was correct and absolutely spot-on that we do not have a user in tow at this time. What Hunter and I are doing is getting the site ready for development, and then we are working hard to market this. And when you market industrial sites, you're almost marketing it on a nationwide basis in large, large searches that are started and sites get identified, and then you begin working more specifically. That being said, we thought it was important and appropriate to be able to show what was the potential for the site and what is the sort of almost max density that could be put on the site. Our real belief is, as we work through that, councilman, that that number will likely go down when you consider buffer, screening, landscaping, stormwater detention, all of those components, traffic, all of those things that we're going to have to do when we go into full engineering on the site. We actually think the site will probably get much bigger. Our budget will get smaller than what is shown there. But that was conceptual massing to give everybody a feel for how big of a project this can be. And when I say big, how big this can be for the county, how big this can be for the city, how big it can be for the whole entire region, because we are talking about one of the largest contiguous tracks in all of Wyandotte County.
One more question, and this is, obviously, I've had a few constituents call.
Yep.
What would happen to these lakes/ponds? Would they all go away?
I'm going to bring up Hunter. Hunter's been working diligently with the engineering team on this.
Thank you. Hunter Harris, I'm a partner with Lane Four Property Group, and I've been working with some of the engineers on the concept site plans. I think what you see before you in your staff package, as Corv mentioned tonight, is if, if there were no constraints on topography, existing water bodies on the site, that's what could be built there. The fact of the matter is, it's, it's very expensive to do that. There are other issues, such as the Army Corps, who have jurisdiction on these types of waters and streamways. That's an expensive process. So as this project unfolds and as we develop marketing plans and work with specific users, I would say there's a very high degree of likelihood that many of those watersheds on the existing property would remain and/or be worked around so that the site is developed responsibly and that we're aware of the other abutting factors to this project. What wasn't mentioned is, we have spent the past 18 months to two years in moving the Village South project for in Edwardsville. It's a common ownership group between the two sites. I feel very fortunate about that, that it's not Lane Five out of Texas, who's here, who cares nothing for the abutting community. We have over a $50 million investment in hotels that are, are, the pad is being prepared for in the adjacent sites. So we want these developments to be complementary. And we think that by bringing the jobs into this area in a quality and responsibly built development, it will complement what is happening in the neighboring community and with the thesis that hopefully a rising tide will lift all boats here.
Thank you. Other questions, concerns? No, sir?
There's no, or tenant just saying, you're going to market this nationwide, and you mean, just like the availability of I-70, 435 to, you know, and that would entail like trucks and stuff, if somebody realizes that part of it. The, and, yeah, I can see where you're going with that. These buildings, these pictures, concept and your concept elevations, they're looking nice. And so this is what it would be, something like one of these?
Yes. Well, it's merely so large boxes on the site plan. The photos that you see in your package are illustrative of the type and quality of first-class industrial development that we'd like this to become. So that's insulated, precast or tilt panels that you see with spandrel glass and glazing. There's some ministration to the facade, so it's not one large mass as you run across the site, because in addition to my comments about wanting to do quality projects, and if you're not familiar with Lane Four, some of the work that we've done in Wyandotte County, I'd love to visit with you another time about it. But we care very much about the pride and legacy that we leave with these developments. So the pictures, to answer your question, are indicative of the types of buildings that we hope to see there.
Because they look nice.
Yep. That's what we plan to market.
But I'd like to see for the, because I'm sure the other neighbors out there, there's people who live there, and, you know, it needs to look nice for them people that are there. You know, I remember, I'm not blustering, but at one time, some of us remember, State Avenue there, it was Kentucky Fried Chicken, that was it. Things have changed in that area, and it's making this 156 acres change. I read in the comments, Mr. Mansmer said, well, you hate to see the farms go away, but you do, that big pasture. Something's going to go there someday. I don't know if people would be happy with apartments. Somebody probably wouldn't be, too many people. But I like these pictures, and I hope that's the way it looks out.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll, obviously, if we're fortunate enough to be advanced this evening, be working with your staff through the plating process on the actual plans for the site as we work with specific users. And so we have a, a long ways to go as it relates to traffic and road improvements and other things to make this happen. But yes, I certainly agree with your comments that Mr. Maxwell mentioned at the planning commission, being that the die was likely cast 20 years ago when the Speedway came to this area, and it was, it was merely sped along when Edwardsville was able to bring the sewers across the highway. And we've been working with that community about a win-win partnership to give access to this site.
Yeah. I'm happy. Okay. I know the growth happens, and it's just, it's inevitable. I know a lot of the people don't want to see the growth occur, but, you know, it's just, it's the natural place growth is. Even Edwardsville has identified that, because all the property to the north, all the way from 118th, all the way to the east, around I-435, has all been on their future land map plan as, as commercial, or mixed use. In fact, they've even rezoned some of the portions directly north of this property as commercial. But even though there is change, we still want to make sure that the individuals that live around that property, both in Bonner and Edwardsville, are impacted as little as possible. And I know they've had a couple of concerns. One was the aesthetics, which hopefully we can create proper buffers for that. But the second would be the traffic. And I know we have a traffic study that will, and I don't know if you want to explain the traffic study a little bit, of what the city policy is on that?
The traffic impact study is required. We have guidelines, the City of Bonner Springs has guidelines that they'll get and use. It's really going to take a look, their footprint and their exit pattern into those streets. They'll take a look at what's anticipated, what could go in 2.4 million square feet, and what's the ratio over 24-hour period. Ours requires a 24-hour analysis. A lot of engineers don't like doing that, but that's what we're going to do. It's going to indicate the percentage of traffic going in what direction, somebody goes south on 110th, how they go north, how many go west on Riverview or east. Because in our opinion is, that's the percentages of those reconstruction costs and what that is. Evaluation will come out of that process. We've asked for that ahead of the preliminary plat, so that we, because it's joy, Riverview is Bonner Springs responsibility, 110th is Edwardsville, and we're going to work with them to get that done. So that's what this will help us do. They'll take that.
And then, I assume you're planning on following through on the traffic studies as to our fee can?
Absolutely. Acknowledged and agree with all of the staff's stipulations and understand that there are that there are traffic needs out there, and we're going to work through that. And we're going to work through that on the back of this project, on the back of the Village South project, between Bonner Springs, between Edwardsville, between the unified government. But we look forward to that process, and we will get you all the data so that all of us can make intelligent and informed decisions on what the traffic needs out there are and how we handle it.
Well, 110th Street, Edwardsville Drive, excuse me, Tom.
Hey, fun.
There's already been some marked monies coming into it from Edwardsville. It's already slated to be improved heading south, correct?
I'm not exactly sure about that, Councilmember. I know through our Village South project, we've had a lot of discussions about those interchanges and when they function good and when they need a little help on them, and what our development's going to do there and what this development is going to do. So, there's some work to be done out there, undoubtedly. And we obviously know that and are committed to that and agree with the staff stipulation that has been put here and look forward to getting the traffic study so all of us can start digging into this and figuring out the scope, the need, and the timing, and the cost of all of those traffic improvements that need to be put together.
Good. Anything else?
Yeah, it's an area of the city that's going to have finally reap some of the benefits of this 20-year path of redevelopment in the western portion of Wyandotte County. It is sorely needed, not only in Bonner Springs, Edwardsville, Wyandotte County, but the state of Kansas needs to have this type of commitment. I have already entertained a motion. I will take a call for a vote, please.
Janus?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Ethan?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're excited.
Thank you. Rolling along to item number 17, utility rates. Stat.
Tilly, the man, finance director, she worked off on April 28th. She discussed options for increasing water and sewer rates. These are recommendations from the utility rate study that was done earlier this year. The staff's approving item number one, water monthly service fee. Options to approve Chart One recommended rates. Also, to increase the rate per thousand from 61 cents, from 557 to 618, and to eliminate the current volume discount rate for usage over 120,000 gallons. For water impact fees, to approve the recommended rates in Chart Two. For out-of-city service fees and rates, to increase from 110% of the current rates to 150%. For wastewater fees, to increase rates to the recommended rates in Chart Three. For wastewater rates per thousand, to increase from 615 per thousand to 666 per thousand. For wastewater impact fees, to increase to the recommended rates in Chart Four. And wastewater out-of-city service fees and rates to increase from 110% of current rates to 150%. If there are any questions?
Seeing none, stand for questions as we need. Anything to add? Anyone else have any other comments? Citizens? Others here? People in the audience is how I should address that. Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve water and wastewater rate and fee changes listed within the staff report effective for bills issued after June 1st, 2017.
Moving in second. Questions, concerns, comments? Start down here, sir.
The Edwardsville, how does that look to you? You think you can crystal ball?
It's a process. I don't mean that to sound cute or to joke. It's just, we're working awfully hard to find a win-win for everybody. And it's, we didn't come to this project with a lot of history for how the utilities of the site was developed. All that being said, we've had very good meetings with many of the council persons on the Edwardsville City Council and the mayor individually, and we had a very informative and positive work session last Monday evening where we walked through a lot of issues and how we get there. And much like my comments before about how we have a process to go through as it relates to our preliminary and final plating work and other issues to solve on this site that need to be dealt with. It's time and place. So, we're confident that we can get there, and we're working hard in order to do so.
Thank you. Anything else, sir?
And I think I've already said enough.
Very good. Vote, please.
Janus?
Yes.
Cooper?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Stephen?
Yes.
Skip?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We're excited.
Rollin' along to item number 17, utility rates. Stat.
Tilly, the man, finance director, she worked off on April 28th. She discussed options for increasing water and sewer rates. These are recommendations from the utility rate study that was done earlier this year. The staff's approving item number one, water monthly service fee. Options to approve Chart One recommended rates. Also, to increase the rate per thousand from 61 cents, from 557 to 618, and to eliminate the current volume discount rate for usage over 120,000 gallons. For water impact fees, to approve the recommended rates in Chart Two. For out-of-city service fees and rates, to increase from 110% of the current rates to 150%. For wastewater fees, to increase rates to the recommended rates in Chart Three. For wastewater rates per thousand, to increase from 615 per thousand to 666 per thousand. For wastewater impact fees, to increase to the recommended rates in Chart Four. And wastewater out-of-city service fees and rates to increase from 110% of current rates to 150%. Is there any questions?
Seeing none, stand for questions as we need. Anything to add? Anyone else have any other comments? Citizens? Others here? People in the audience is how I should address that. Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to approve water and wastewater rate and fee changes listed within the staff report effective for bills issued after June 1st, 2017.
Second?
Moving in second. Questions, concerns, comments? Start down here, sir.
Nope.
Man?
Captain?
Sir?
The city manager in Tilly, if that this, but I don't see Ron White as our utility guy now. And, you know, this was another study from an outside guy. He didn't have any input in that study, Ron?
This is the same study that the city did about 10 years ago. The intent was to figure out what we need to have our waste solid for the week run our operations to the law.
Didn't he discuss all of this?
Yes.
Capital size for Ron Rick, the rest of the state, and 10, 15 years. As far as their preparation, that's no doubt. You'll be making sure that we're wide for sure.
And we did this last year and the year before, and I think the year before. So, now we've had somebody else tell us we need to-
Raise the rates?
Yes, we've raised rates every year, every April.
This is a change in structure.
That's all. I just wondered why there was no, Ron, I never saw him at the meetings. All that. That's all I got.
Anything else? Vote, please.
Ethan?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Early?
Yes.
Thompson?
Yes.
Cooper? I'm going to vote no.
Janus?
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor Harrington?
That's what I get for voting so much.
Well, you can still vote. It just don't count for anything, but.
On to item number 18, the city manager's report.
Quickly, it's summertime in the air. There's several events coming up throughout the month of May. Those events in your packet, I will mention, the farmer's market started off this week and will continue for the next several weeks. It's a good event. That was Memorial Day, that was past week. I also want to note that Memorial Day is coming up. Traffic service will be delayed by a day, holiday on Monday. And then also, the budget calendar, passed through your guys, considerations on public, or public, I don't know, first meeting or briefing will occur. This year is the need given property tax legislation, the city doesn't have on the basic many property taxes. We will continue on this trajectory with again, first budget briefing taking place on your floor. That concludes my report.
Very good. City council, on to item number, I'm sorry, 19, city council items, and we'll start down here.
Well, just one question. I didn't know if this state, if they were still planning on having that memorial dedication on the 20th of May, because I didn't understand what in the city manager's report.
Yes, as I understand it, as late as Saturday, talking with Laura Birch, they are still planning the memorial dedication to first responders on, at 1:00 on Saturday, May 20th.
That's what I got, counsel.
At North Park, at the entrance to North Park.
It's not just, it's for public.
Oh, yeah, everybody.
Yeah, school, everybody. I paid for one of them, but.
That's my understanding.
Well, I'm sorry.
Yeah, memorial dedication. I don't know if it's-
Yeah.
Which one?
Ah, there is upcoming an event. You do have an, third item on six. Very good. I missed that. Apologies. We'll cut that portion of the tape out.
Sir?
No, just Memorial Days was fun again. One of the fun times. Farmer's Market looked like a good kickoff, actually. Needs a little tweaking and some things, but it was good. So, other than that, you know, just happy to be here in the words of white grace for them that knew it.
Nothing, Dad?
Nothing.
Congrats on the first farmer's market weekend. Sorry I was out of town, but look forward to its success.
Very good. Rolling along to the mayor's report. I do have a few things. Would you mind making a brief report on the farmer's market?
Oh.
I'm pretty proud of it, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, but-
Plus, I'll make it up as I go. Grab a flag or four or five. So, the day started off with a couple hiccups, but I'm working on those. The market itself exceeded everyone's wildest dreams. I've gotten personal thank yous from every vendor. They, most of them cleared over $1,000 in sales in one day. So, the rest of the year is pure profit for them. And because of that, they will be supporting me through the slow weeks as well, obviously, because it's going to take a while to build the vision that we have. We do have a business plan for every Saturday going forward to keep drawing people in. Our meat vendor, our pork vendor sold out twice and had to keep going home and getting more supplies. Our spice people said they sold more here than they did at the American Royal. Our honey vendor ran out of everything, and he said he'll be spending all week making more, and this is better than any other city market or festival or holiday show he's ever sold at. The mine aces who have enough stuff to be their own market, they split between a lot of markets in the area, and he misjudged how much he was going to sell. He sold 20 jellies and said even Olafah doesn't touch that ever. So, it was, it was far and away amazing, and I will get started on fixing the things that weren't amazing. And it's going to be great. I can, I can promise you that.
Good job.
So, I appreciate all of the help and support, and I hope I included everyone in my thank you in the newsletter. We'll have our newsletters going out Wednesday or Thursday of each week, with recipes, and who's going to be there, and who's going to be selling what. I did, now vendors that I called months ago were suddenly contacting me because they want in. So, we go have dairy going forward. If they get their paperwork in, they'll be here this week. I have several other farms that were working big for me, and suddenly, you know, they're going to be selling. So, it was fantastic. It was amazing, and I just can't say enough good stuff about it, so.
Great. Thank you for all your hard work. We appreciate it.
Thanks, Travis. A quick question.
Sure.
You mentioned you had a few wrinkles. I was curious. I wasn't able to stay there very late, very long, but when I walked away, I noticed one thing. I wondered if it would become an issue, and that was if they shouldn't have a buffer for parking to be able to circle. Because if you come down the one, you hit the ribbon, and you have, if it fills up, then you've got to back out. So, I was curious.
Yeah, there were a few cases of that. That is something I'm going to have to get, I don't know, more cones, more pendants. I'm not sure how to do that where people aren't just going to park in between whatever row of cones I set up. As it goes forward, it can afford more signs and get more volunteers. Obviously, we can, we can work on that.
Put you in a yellow jacket, orange jacket, Georgia, you can direct traffic.
Yeah, I got tie-dye dim overalls. They work good.
And I mean, and I will be speaking as well with the city manager and the police chief. I have some signs that I made up to get posted around the park to keep people from parking right in the middle of my farmer's market, so that doesn't happen again. And harvesters, I called today, they told me they have not received vouchers yet themselves, so they could not come distribute them. That is the word. Now, they will, they should have them by June 1st, and we will obviously do another big push to make sure that our seniors get out there, because Wyandotte County is severely restricted in the number of vouchers they're receiving this year, and they're controlling them pretty tightly. So, we'll have one shot to get it right, and then anyone that doesn't show up will end up on a waiting list. So, I will, I will have that information once they do, and I'll get that put out as well.
Travis, the lady from Holyfield, she was happy to be there. I guess some other people have turned down her applications, she said. So, she was happy to come, and I think there's enough people that that was kind of the hit. And I have, since we're all here, and Mr. Don Sloan's here, I'm hearing, you know, maybe one of them real small, we need maybe a storage thing, like one of them real small ones, temporary, just put it in the corner to put our cones in our tents.
Cones, trash cans, tables, chairs.
Similar to the one, maybe the real small one like they have at Dairy Queen for all these months, and a temporary one.
Yeah, that would save me about as much as worth of renovation and tear down if we were able to do that. And also-
Trailer, do it with the trailer.
I did receive permission as well from Clausy to put up a large banner on the fence there that you can see from the Thriftway parking lot, so that's another thing I'll be-
His fence.
So, that's another thing I'll be looking for permission for.
Yes, we're going to look into all these things.
Oh, yeah. I've got, I've got a long list of things. But right now, I just, you know, I'm coming off a big week, and I'm getting ready for week two, and I'll, I'll handle them as they come.
Well, I hope like the Junkers Jamboree weekend, that should be a lot more people.
I'm looking to have like a food truck day every month. We'll have Mother's Day things going on this week. The 20th, we'll have police, firefighters, EMT trucks out there for kids to go through. Junkers Jamboree, and we've got a long list of things we've got planned. And I, just everything so far, the numbers are unbelievable. And a lot of people are sad they missed out on that one. But we're going to be doing that for the next 25 weeks.
Cool.
Well, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And all your work.
Looks good.
Did a good job setting this up.
Going on, I'd also like to extend my appreciation for all of Marble Days, all the staff, Amber, everyone who worked so hard, and Betsy, I'm sorry, her last name.
Smith.
Smith. Yeah, it's hard to forget.
Sure, yeah.
On how well-received it was. It's a growing process, the Marble Day event, which is a family fun, friendly event that is so well-received by a niche portion of our community, and it's something that- by a niche portion of our community, and it's something that the city certainly benefits from, so I appreciate all their hard work. Not only Parks and Recreation and Public Works, Utilities, the Police Department, the Fire Department.
VFW, Boy Scout.
Well, a lot of the civic groups, but all the different parts of the, of the city operations were involved, and they, they shone very well. Even during the cleanup, they were, they were happy and, and very professional in how they handled themselves. Moving on, the farmer's market, as well as Marble Days, big parts of the city of Bonner Springs, and I was glad to be a part of it now that it's over. The pink suit I got, honestly, I got a lot more compliments on, that's how a mayor ought to be. I don't know what mayor they're comparing me to, because the one that was here before wore a pretty funny costume, too. But I'm happy to be a part of it and support it, and will continue to. In the same lines, one of the weekends, the new coffee shop, Third Space Coffee Shop, I, I'm not sure if it's them, or they're just associated with it, but it's having a Mother's Day celebration with a car wash and something behind their business, and I believe it's on a Saturday. So I, I'm looking forward to helping with that, and I'm sure it'll be easily accommodated, but another reason to have things going on downtown. The Memorial Day celebration that's coming up at the cemetery, we're looking forward to that, and that'll be on, at 10:00 AM on Monday, May 29th, at the cemetery. And I'd encourage everyone to attend that, all the council people that are in town. I'd be happy to have you there. And as noted, they have opportunity to bring old flags that need to be retired, and the Boy Scouts or VFW will help with that. Also, the cemetery, it's a nice way to honor and respect those that are there at the cemetery. So any, anyone that wants to be a part of that, if you need more information, please give me a, a call. Also, the law enforcement memorial celebration is coming up, and that's going to be Wednesday of next week. I believe that's the-
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth. And I'll unfortunately be out of town. So-
I should be there.
Mr. Stevens, if you could stand in for me, I'd appreciate that. And I, I know it's during the day, but all of you council people that would be able to be there, as well as city staff, it's a very moving, touching service as well. This is an opportunity for our Police Department to show their respect for their fallen comrades. Having had two police officers killed in the line of duty here in Bonner Springs, that sets us apart. It's not a moniker that is coveted by many, but it's certainly one that we bear honorably. So unfortunately, this will be the first time I, I'm missing it, and I will, it will be, I will be there in thought.
Jeff, what day was it?
That's the 17th, Wednesday, May 17th, and I believe it's at noon, 11.
11?
Nope, sorry. I'm sorry, I don't mean to regurgitate things that are already printed, but it's important to me. Oh, yes, also on Arbor Day, I had the opportunity, since we are a tree city, for the 31st year in a row, the city of Bonner Springs has been designated that certification again, and I received this from Bonner Beautiful at the Arbor Day Celebration at the elementary school. And Bonner Beautiful put on a very nice program that the children both learned and had a bunch of fun at. So if you ever have an opportunity to be at the Arbor Day Celebration, do it, because it's a hoot. But also, and I'm passing that on to the city, as well as on Wednesday, May 17th, there is a EMS, in honor of EMS Week at Providence Medical Center, there is a celebration, complimentary picnic, lunch, and the blessing of EMS and police and service vehicles, which will start at 11:00 AM, right at the same time as our ceremony for the police. But I just thought I'd mention that for those of you who might be interested. Other than that, I don't have any other news or information. Seeing none. Yes, sir? I'd entertain any questions?
If I had a phone like you guys, I could keep track of things. I don't, I forgot to mention that I attended the Deer Festival, the 90th Annual.
Yes, thank you. I appreciate that.
It was fantastic, as ever. It's just a cool thing that Bonner does for all the school districts around. I wish the KC Cape Police of 500 were still in it. Maybe that will happen someday. But it was fun, it's cool, the kids are great, you know, Attorney General was there, Stephen, I mean, yeah.
Derek.
Yeah, Derek Smith, excuse me, was there. I'm thinking back to the old one. And it was pretty good. And it's just something neat that's not, we've done 19 years here in Bonner, and we're gonna do it again, I guess, next year.
Yep. Very good. Unless there's any questions, or general?